Alright, everybody, welcome to our November work session. It's typically our more informal meeting of the month, so a lot of us are pretty involved. We're gonna go ahead and get started. We have one old business item to get rid of and several new business items. And then we'll take up some discussions about things from our management. So I'm just gonna start with item number one.
Good, Mayor. Hope everyone's doing well. And good evening to council and everyone. Mr. Mayor and council, this is AX twenty-five oh-two. This is an application on Twenty Down Road for annexation that council has seen several times over the past few months. The brief update is that staff did meet with Mr. Park, I believe, last Wednesday or so, and the application is still not ready for presentation to council. We did mention to Mr. Park's applicant that it's staff's recommendation that at this point it would be better to withdraw the application without prejudice and have a restart, a refresh with them. As of this moment, we don't have that letter from Mr. Park formally requesting that. We're hoping that we will get that in the next day or so. But the staff recommendation would be that to Mr. Park that if you know that he'd do that. And so we're hoping that we will get that in the next day or so and be able to do again a refresh, restart at the beginning of the year thereabouts as it's more likely.
Sounds good. I know that we have to receive that request from the applicant, you know, to give you the draw for that. So hopefully we'll get that direction. I know that city council would like some changes to make that we could do with the place. Alright, any questions, Art? Okay, we'll move on to new business. Art, you are up next, but this one is one.
Thank you, Mayor. Here we have, this is request AX two-five dash zero-zero-three fifty-nine forty-two coming highway. This is the property in question, this triangular shaped lot, which is being requested to be annexed into the city for the one-hundred percent method. There was no objections from the county board commissioners or what have been patient with their notifications. But just to give a point of reference, here is the Prover Shopping Center and the Pelver Shopping Center across the street. This property backs up to Fifth Third.
When we personally moved to Fifth Third Bank.
The Fifth Third Bank, yeah.
On the other side.
Yes, exactly. And then Zaxby's there, which is one of my.
Chipotle.
Chipotle, so yeah. Just to give a point of reference there. And here are the existing zonings. So we have several that are in the city that are zoned BG and then the state of the Royal Park, which is RS fifty-five high. And then we have county zonings. Sorry, I missed that little question. I'm very sorry. Sorry, I'm so sorry. I'm still learning.
Yeah, you're learning.
So one of the points goes out there. And then the county zoning that are adjacent as well. Here is a site plan of the proposed operation. This is for Seven Brew Coffee. You can see the site plan here. So it's understanding that the Seven Brew Corporation uses a Chick-fil-A style ordering system, this drive group, where the workers will take the orders as they come around. That eliminates the need for the speaker boxes, so that mitigates noise concerns. Here are some renderings of the proposed building. Staff recommendation is approval. There is a recommendation from the planning commission approved as well. We'll go back to the site plan here, just briefly here. And just a couple of notes, access will be via the commercial roadway that comes off Georgia Twining, which is currently connecting Zaxby's, Chipotle, and the, and to connect with Fifth Third Bank, which is under construction, as opposed to having a direct access off Georgia Twining. There was some opposition from a couple neighbors regarding traffic congestion, accidents and turning left at the symbolized intersection of Zaxby's. One thing to mention to council, going toward coming if you're turning left into Zaxby's, which I do about once a week or so, there is a dedicated left turning lane now. So that was something that I believe that kind of the planning commission. So just a point of reference there. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the conditions that's outlined in the staff report and the planning commission recommended approval by the board for this.
I think that's all in Sodis family property. I think his mom would be a little bit used to it in life, kind of Sodis or resident, even more. Any questions? You mentioned the dedicated turn lane, that's all the names and sections. We'll go up that number, there's a destination drop zero, which is there. So that's the way you do it all there.
I don't mind the use. I had a question about the lot. You didn't mention the variances, or do they have variances requested? Just what is the type shape lots? And the last thing, you mentioned access. Obviously, they want access to the lot, but that's not a public rented. Do you have a letter? I'd like to see the letter that says that they've been paying that access from whoever owns the property there. The works of through Fifth Third and the works of Zaxby's. Do you know which property that is? I'll make sure they got the little four there.
Art, you mentioned about in-person ordering, you know, speakers. Is that, is that not allowed in that zoning? Or is that, the council considers that would that be a condition they would want to put on this property? Because from the folks that I've heard that live in Twin Creeks, their concerns are that speaker, the speaker itself, so would it be appropriate then, and you don't want to answer this now, but would it be appropriate then to put a condition in the zoning to prohibit a, so that they couldn't convert, say, a year from now, say, their business model changes and they don't want to have to hire staff and they go to some sort of chaos order system or something? I just don't want that speaker, I want to assure those residents that that speaker's not gonna be good.
I would, yes, sir. And then if that scenario were to come about, then as a change in vision would be.
Yeah, okay, alright. And then the other question I had is related to the back, kind of back half of that triangle. See, it's got a seriesment in the back of it, but the rest of it, is it the rest of it a wooded area? And would that stay wooded or how are they handling the stormwater management? Where's that going? Because I don't see it outlined on here. I assume it'll be underground, it's not shown in that back, that back ridge. But you did have nobody that wanted it somewhere in there.
I think, and we can double check, but I think the rear is going to try to stay as undisturbed as possible. With the detention, the stormwater, all those things will definitely be worked out. If zoned, annexed during development review. So I don't want to say specifically where I go in this particular area, but more than likely will be in that rear.
Okay. And I think to Gary's question, that on that site plan, it does, it does mention the access easement shown. It shows the D-Book page on that access easement up to this property, it's shown on the planet. This is I-14. Anyway, that's all, that's all.
Anybody else want to add more? That triangle piece we're talking about at the back, you mentioned undisturbed, but I don't know if it's on that particular form of property or the bank nearby, but those houses are all accessible from Twenty, where they're getting used to be. So I'd like to see some requirements, either, that sort of may not be enough. But just want to make sure we got adequate screening for the residents. Particularly if there's going to be undeveloped there.
Anybody else? Thank you, Art, for that one. Next, we'll move on to item number three.
Thank you, Mayor. This is request AX two-five dash zero-zero-four sixty-three eighteen Twenty Down Road. Here is the parcel in question. The property is currently zoned R-one-hundred in the county. The requested zoning is to come into the city under RS-one-hundred with a conservation subdivision overlay. Here is the proposed site plan. And just to briefly talk about this side, Mayor and council, there's been a question in regards to a waterway to some degree that is potentially on the site. So staff has visited the site twice, I think, since planning commission, once when we were still pre-driving and not raining for the drive. And then once we had that fairly much rain event last week, to take a look at to see what the conditions are. The, most likely the, for the EPE and for the four engineers will have to make a call of determination on that. We'd have some difficulty reports that haven't submitted from the applicant. So we definitely want to take a look at that and see. But most likely there will be some buffering that will be needed. So the staff recommends approval with conditions as outlined, except for the planning commission recommended by three-to-one. There was opposition to the request from several neighbors, including impacts on it, joining property on its privacy, loss habitat for trees and wildlife, stormwater drainage concerns, increased traffic amongst existing blocks five near Royal Park and school overcrowding. And during the presentation, the applicant, the representative of applicant had requested to modify or be exemplified some of the staff additions, numbers four and five, which number four is no more than twenty percent of the total number of loan that the rent leased at any given time. And number five, which is related to, that was three natural gas supplies being installed in each unit. So I'll just go back to the one. It's like, it's like coming into show. Now, this is showing thirty-four homes. On with the conservation subdivision overlay, the required open space percentage is minimum forty percent. The current zoning is in the county, which will allow just on base straight numbers, possibly twenty-nine issue of homes. But of course, that's just straight flat math, you know, without the minimum amount of other things. So just to kind of give a comparison.
No green space, right?
Sir?
No green space, right?
I think the minimum is, you gave me about a fifty.
Ten percent. And I really think that's quite good. Are you finished, though?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the question I have, the reason for the conservation subdivision is supposed to be to preserve future the land, something like that. It's specifically not supposed to be a tool for the developer to get credit for developing the land. What is proposed in these areas and what committee would propose for this subdivision?
I don't think there was specific answers to that.
No, no, maybe like pools or anything like that. But no, like, is it, or benches or nothing? What, what we can look into the, 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 is that some of the open space that they have? We're like, maybe that that open space that we've, that enhanced landscaping, ventures, there, you know, some sort of combination. That being said, most of the open space is going to be primarily undisturbed with areas, especially on the perimeter of the property.
Get down to a map that shows us if it's a developed area.
Yeah, it should be in the package, but we don't have it in this presentation.
So from your observation of it, is it just a hole they're trying to get credit for? I know there's some nice flat spot on the front, which may be where this lumped on is. I don't know what the left hand corner of it is. What, what is the, what are these open areas? And I'm seeing the back, they've got the tension, you know, which is acceptable. Is this usable on a, on a, on a? If it's subdivision on a map, that, 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 or it's just a hole with some trees going on. And by the way, that's, I don't want to put it on there, it's not too big of a corner. Somebody who does any of that or some more clarification from the developer? Because I don't particularly see why she conservations of the division won't get best credit if they're not done for, you know, what the policy is for the land. Any other questions?
Art, you mentioned that straight RS-one-hundred would be about twenty-nine acres, about that range.
For the.
You said with RS-one-hundred.
Yes, of course.
Right. So now we're looking at thirty-four homes, but in a conservation district. I would thought it would be maybe the same amount of homes, or maybe just an extra. The other thing that I'm concerned about too, because this was with another subdivision we recently approved, is thirty-four homes and the road that has to be maintained by the HOA. And still be a subdivision of this size. That could be a burden of the HOA, maybe not right away. But I just wanted to go on record that I think that should be a city on the road.
Art, when you were talking about the twenty-nine, is that RS-one-hundred in the city or R-one-hundred in the county?
Is the R-one-hundred.
In the county. Just want you to talk about not RS-one-hundred in the city. Just to clarify the question again. I see that there's a topo map on, it's on page twenty-five of the, of our package. There is a, there's a relief map in there. Page twenty, sorry, page twenty of the package. Showing, shows, shows red is the slope seventy-two-five percent. Whoever's running the screen, not put that, that particular map up. It's the slope map. It's up there, she, I don't know if she has this stuff. Pages nineteen and twenty show the existing, which is on the rock there.
Alright.
It looks like it's, it looks like it's. Can you just get that off the, on the last page, first, over that?
Yeah, I mean, comment, I mean, I'm in favor of utilization. Appreciate any time we can close up our seat limits and make this cleaner. I think thirty-four is too intensive for this, especially with zero amenities. You start lowering the unit count on this and then the road doesn't become burdensome for the HOA. You know, unless you're reserving from the start, from day one, and then probably gonna have to pay back some sort of loans to the developer. So that's just a tough one to call. So we forgot there. Council want to aid in terms of going up the road, figuring out what that looks like if we're gonna proceed to this in a way, shape or form.
Any other questions or comments on this? Alright, Art, we'll move on to item number four.
Alright, yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This is a rezoning request for forty-eight thirty-two White Street. The request is to rezone from MH Mobile Homes to R-thirty-six to three units to a site setback variance request for five feet to ten feet, excuse me, from ten feet to five feet on zero-point-six-one-nine acres. Here is the parcel outlined. And council may recall, we had a few months ago in spring, a similar application on White Street. And council may also recall that White Street is somewhat different because going down the middle devoured the white and then across a lot of the deeper, as none is law. So there are the zonings of this area. This particular development, again, is proposed to be three lots bordering on, fronting on Border Street with this intersection with White. Give us some opposing renderings of the three homes. For staff recommendations. Again, the lots with front on Border Street, the staff added admission number four, which is highlighted here, states that the developer shall dedicate a portion of apartments to the city for future rightward improvements. There was some opposition from some of the neighbors and that centered upon some stormwater concerns and the narrowness, current narrowness of the street of White slash White Street and challenges that the PAC sent back before. In conclusion, staff recommends approval as outlined in the staff report. The planning commission voted three-to-one to recommend taking a decision by council. But that was based on the road width of the U-P line, which as the staff, we, of course, have the zone consideration, you know, that we have to look at. But I did want to, you know, share that with council in regards to the planning commissions, the laws on this to provide.
So did they, I'm going to use my white chair. Did they have some, or did they table something?
Their recommendation of the M-R plan commission was to recommend to the council.
Mayor, if I might, I was there to think. The purpose of that was they suggested that it be paid for. You know, termination of, of the, of the, of the, of the.
My question is kind of sitting on, where is it paid? Is it paid with, what is the issue?
If the decision would, would, would apply with council.
Okay, got it. Thank you. I learn something new every year. Alright, any questions about, about?
It's about the road there. I just, this question calls. Is the street department looking into this? Is, is somebody looking at the options for the road and what the options are to the roads? Has it said anything?
The plan, the plan is just, this question, I don't know. Should, which, which, you know, should be, should be, should be, should be, yeah. It should have right away. It's, it's, which, and speaking, I don't know, I shouldn't, basically, we want to change the coordination. This is a thing, and then we're having something to do with that. But I think that's one of the confusion started. The road that's, we're not, we're not, we're going to dedicate the, the right of way to the, to the, to the property, similar to what we did on the previous, which is.
Just for my clarification, it's, Border Street is entirely within the city. It's, it's Line Street that is here then, that's the shared, which is the side road, not the road these houses are front on. It's the, it's the side road to these houses, not the road that, that's. And is that where the concerns were with, with Line Street or was it both Line and Border? Is that, is that clear?
The conversation that I recall was of Line.
Is Line?
Well, White slash Line, not Border.
Yeah, okay, thanks. I just want to clarify what you were talking about.
I broke this over and I've been out to the property. And both White Street and Border Street are still very narrow roads. And that corner property, its border is still narrow. And I know there's those three houses that are going to build, you know, currently up. And at that time, I would say three houses stay on there, but that started the trend. I don't believe the variance to be, have the size that that should be ten to five feet. I would like to know if when you met with the applicant or the developer, I'd like to know if there's any flexibility with this plan to only have two houses instead of three. As I mentioned, you know, the, the road is narrow. And we'll have the three new houses on White Street. And that's kind of a rough corner. And we know that there could be some options for road improvement, which would be great. But I'd like to know if the developer applicant indicated in any way at all there might be some flexibility to only have two houses there instead of three. I understand that option.
The purpose is to, but we can go back to the applicant to see. I, I, I can't answer that question fully.
I just didn't know we said something in there that.
It appears Line Street terminates basically at the back side of this property, line slash White Street. Correct? So yeah, it was kind of got a, not a really true cul-de-sac, but there's a little turnaround area. Is that right? That's the end of the street right there. So improvements to that street, Line Street, that would benefit, that looks like it has a home with a driveway back there. So really, you don't need, you're going back beyond there, that homeowner there. Six, is that correct? I think that is. Might be kind of pressure from the applicant to show that the driveway is there on Line Street. We don't, it's border and. Anyway, I just want to find out if that, with one, with one driveway on, beyond this property. Or ninety-two appears to be close to the intersection.
When ninety-two appears to be close to the intersection, driveway.
Yeah, the question, um, so it sounds like the planning and zoning commission for, uh, recommendation for us to table it wasn't a good idea. There, it sounds like some of these things are not being looked at, uh, on the, uh, just to put it off.
All right, um, that's next on that. All right, we'll move on to item number five. All right, then with you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This is a zoning ordinance amendment, uh, regarding the residential keeping of chickens. Um, sometime back, uh, the staff had direction from council to look at, uh, a possible ordinance amendment to allow, under certain circumstances, uh, the residential keeping of chickens. So, uh, staff has worked on that, uh, with the city attorney, uh, and we, uh, have the proposal, uh, for you this evening, uh, for your consideration. Again, the city council initiated a ordinance request to allow the keeping of residential chickens. Uh, at the planning commission, there was no public comment. Some of the highlights, um, keep them no more than ten hens, no roosters, uh, depending upon lot size, uh, they'll be allowed in, um, the A of RS one hundred, RS one fifties, RS one seventy-five, RS two hundred and fifty in some districts, uh, not allowed in the central business district or the town center overlay, uh, must be kept in cool silence. This must be twenty feet from apartment lines, fifty feet, fifty feet from basic houses. And coos must be kept in clean and sanitary conditions. And this is for an alcohol production, uh, no swabbing, you know, of the chickens. And again, that's shown there. Again, uh, the zoning districts, uh, will be allowed, uh, max size, uh, no, max number of chickens will be ten. And this kind of, uh, gives what some of the jurisdictions, uh, currently allow. Only Swanee and Alpharetta. So the recommendation is to, uh, approve with language, uh, except for, again, we didn't have this reviewed with the city attorney's office. Um, also, it's a liberty, uh, to, um, uh, the GTA's, uh, the, the department name, not quite right, uh, their Department of Cultry Science, uh, and, uh, the staff there was very helpful, uh, regards to just, uh, being, uh, open for questions, uh, so, uh, so, uh, again, I took liberty to, to do that as well. And it is, what is before you this evening? I have some data. And just to give a little more specificity in regards, I said the maximum number would be ten and it depends on the lot size. Uh, so for example, uh, lots that are between ten thousand five feet to twelve thousand four ninety-nine, uh, will have a maximum of three and then, uh, a tier, uh, event with that, so just to, uh, let's not slip through that. Uh, we, there would be a permit, uh, for required for the coos, uh, will you have built in a permit for the application self to keep that, so we, uh, track that. We have a proposed fee, which I think is fifty dollars. That's just a nominal amount that we, this part of the trade calls, uh, for five, whatever that would be, or not. And, uh, the enforcement would be through, uh, planning and development under, uh, those enforcement. Those are some of the highlights that we're having to do.
Couple of things that I'm understanding is that if you live in a restricted neighborhood, you have an HOA and they have prescriptions on chickens and on animals, this is HOA prescriptions, Trump, uh, if the city, uh, this is provided. And I, I know that someone had asked previously about maybe a flea, because I know that there's a, kind of a common point of discussion, and I actually reached out, because someone, uh, is an expert in that, and asked, and they told me that, with various, this very small blocks, it's impossible to drive, because, um, and the blocks would have to be connected to another block, or, or maybe, maybe, but so it's really not, that's really not an issue. There were just a couple of things that I had, uh, uh, so, any other questions?
I don't have a question. So you mentioned a permit for fifty dollars, is that a one-time fee? Is there any term? Is that, it's not an annual fee or semi-annual, it's just a flat fifty dollar one-time permit fee?
No, I think that's how we have it, uh, uh, proposed, is a one-time, flat fee, yes, ma'am.
Uh, my concern, um, with this is how this would be monitored and enforced. And, um, I would say that, um, I know, uh, they own, they did, with the, with Sugar Hill that has chickens. And the neighbors hear them, the neighbors see them, but whenever code enforcement goes over, they don't see them. So, it's been my understanding, code enforcement has to visibly see them in order to, um, proceed with the notice of violation. And, um, so, this is what turns on me about this, because, especially, you know, ten, you know, there's a maximum. And what if they say, well, these are the three, we only have three, or we only have five? And, you know, okay, I see three, I see five. If there might be more in the cool boy in the garage, but what they see is okay. So I'm just concerned about enforcement. Or, it, it says no roosters. What if the neighbor say, I hear a rooster, I see a picture of a rooster, but code enforcement goes over there, I see a rooster, so we do, so, uh, so I just have a problem with, this could only work for code enforcement and for a lot of neighbors saying, but we know they're there and code enforcement has to say, but we can't see them. So I'm too concerned about code enforcement in this case. I mean, it sounds pretty restrictive, but then the permit is good, that doesn't mean... And somebody might get the chickens and not get a permit, but if code enforcement goes over there and doesn't see them, I, I just think it's going to be a vicious circle. And I don't think it can be well enforced. So how can it, how can you assure me it can be well enforced?
Well, I think that, uh, the hope would be that this would, you know, having the option for, uh, citizens, you know, if you meet, you know, the requirements in terms of the lot size, the area, that it would hopefully, I'll say, bring folks out of hiding, if you will, and, uh, and say, okay, well, I have, if I meet these, uh, criteria and I pay the fee and I purchased the building permit for the coop and, and, and do that, uh, that, that could be much more, uh, well enforced, if you will, for the, uh, instances of that where someone doesn't do the permit and/or they are not in the zoning district or the area to be able to have, you know, the poultry, uh, then, you know, and I've discussed this with, uh, the codes officers, you know, that'll be, you know, or it is, you know, uh, something that will be, you know, looked into. And if the observations, as you mentioned, you're correct, yes, ma'am, uh, are made, uh, then we have, uh, the option where, uh, the ci, the citizens, you know, can, they'll themselves, uh, come this before to offer testimony and so on, that, uh, of anything, you know, in this case, it was chickens. And of course, we don't, we try not to get to that point. Uh, we try to work with citizens, you know, if they, uh, have something, uh, where it's not allowed, or the number is exceeded, or what have you, to let folks get informed of that. And then we have some time to, for them to make adjustments, you know, uh, with that. And then, more often than not, uh, that works out. Uh, when it doesn't and we, if we can't keep going with that, then, uh, as with any code enforcement case, and, or sometimes that take a little while, um, discuss the time limits that we have, you know, with, uh, uh, notices that we have to, you know, give citizens in order to, uh, have a given time to make arrangements. Um, but, again, the hope is that if someone wants to be able to, in this case, to have chickens, that they will take on that responsibility well and to, to do that, um, and then, for the times when that's not the case, then we will, uh, proceed on as we, as we can.
Any other questions or comments? We'll move on to item number six then.
This was an item that we discussed in the work session last month to just let you know we're looking at, uh, food management system further on that, you know, accomplish a few things for us. Uh, but I wanted to kind of bracket, uh, the whole topic real quick. There are a lot of words inside, and I know you're reading them yourself, so that's good. Uh, but I do want to tell you that one of the reasons we're looking at, at this, um, is because it's, it is a focus and has been much more so in recent years, is how we're gonna maintain some financial sustainability when it comes to, uh, keeping a clean for our staff that is, uh, safe and is, uh, more efficient. And that provides us a way to continue to cycle through older vehicles, replace them in a cost-effective way. So that kind of led us to a more structured program that we've done in the past and, uh, just a conference, look at all the data we can about how often we replace vehicles with what, and, uh, getting, uh, all this data in one place. So it was not only, uh, an attempt to cut the upfront cost of the purchase of a vehicle, but it's also an attempt to add value to our food management program. So that's the strategy we're working with and working toward. Uh, we, uh, have been talking to enterprise, they provide us food management services to a number of communities in all the cases that Atlanta, uh, but really introducing something from, uh, that industry, which is looking at its total cost of owning a vehicle, uh, is more than just simply how much you, uh, drop out the door, have to pay for a vehicle. Fortunately or unfortunately, we focus largely on that upfront cost when we purchase vehicles. I think predominantly, the strategy has been to pay cash for vehicles. It's, it's a good financial strategy, we have cash. Uh, we have to cycle through a large number of uses, not so much. And in, uh, the last couple of, um, military cycles, we talked a lot about reducing that demand toward the budget tax, uh, so we're talking about reducing that revenue and we're looking for ways to cut, uh, that particular part of the budget while preserving that level of service and the quality of the service that we're able to provide. So, all those things are converging in and around this topic. Uh, we also, uh, look at, uh, what is it gonna cost us to lease a vehicle versus paying cash for a vehicle? Well, that's, uh, not an easy question to answer, uh, when you are working with a large company that can procure vehicles at a low cost. So, you're familiar with the state contract pricing structure for the state of Georgia, so they do their best to get some, uh, rates and prices fixed for certain types of vehicles. Most of, uh, what we purchase are pickup trucks and occasionally, uh, recently Explorers for public safety. So those are the two main types of vehicles we're looking at. We did look at the Explorer with the, kind of, police interceptor package as one comparison. And over a sixty-month term for a lease structure like this, there is a difference of about eight hundred and fifteen dollars over that sixty-month period. So it does cost more to lease it, uh, but not substantially so over paying cash for it. So we're looking at that in addition to value that's added in a system that allows us to track a bunch of different metrics. And right now, they're in, uh, in different places. So we have our fuel system and our fuel cards in one department. We have maintenance records in another department. And so for us to be able to manage, uh, how old a vehicle is, how involved on it, what service interval that is at, it is, and, uh, it's just not in one shell. And I think that is one of the values of doing a comprehensive book at this type of program. Our average age of our sixty-two vehicles in the standard fleet is over ten years. And I don't have the average mileage, but, uh, many of them are approaching that, uh, that gray point where you want to sell a vehicle before, uh, that thing starts happening. So warranties run out, you know, you're over a hundred thousand miles, you don't want to be in that last part of the life of the vehicle where you're having to invest large sum of money in the maintenance of the vehicle. Um, we also have, uh, a number of vehicles that are not necessarily, uh, having a lot of the features that being a vehicle, so older is not necessarily safer. So we're talking things like blind spot monitoring, uh, lane departure warning systems, uh, collision warning systems. Those are all important, uh, maybe not so much for the vehicles that we're using on the low speed roads, uh, but it is important and it, and it makes, uh, our employees feel safer about driving these vehicles. Parking sensors, which is another one I mentioned. Uh, so those are things that have come out in the, the mid twenties, tens. And so those are largely becoming standard features even on base models, you know. So as we cycle through some of the older vehicles, we'll see some of those safety features become more prevalent in the long-term purchase. Uh, so this is really just a metric-driven analysis. And so we want to look at that, that mileage threshold to see the convergence where, uh, we're maintaining enough equity in the vehicle, uh, when we trade it in, to recapture that and to stay out in front of these, uh, service intervals that are more in line with the transmission and engine failures and, uh, big cost items, so we want to stay in front of that. Uh, we'd like to also track in location, uh, the service that we are doing, the fuel and the driving conditions. So this is just allowing us to keep our service costs low and equity high, uh, through product. So, just for context purposes, there are about sixty-two vehicles, as I mentioned, in the standard, standard fleet of vehicles. We have, uh, probably ten to twenty other large trucks that don't fit this model, uh, so those are into that category with the average price of thirty-nine thousand and that's the total, uh, two hundred. So it's an investment we made, it was a purchase that we made, uh, to a depreciating asset and we just want to manage that, that, you know, in a very logical manner. And that's kind of what this food management program is about. There are a lot of documents that we've been shipping back and forth between the attorneys, so, uh, we're, we're almost there. So I think we've got some final versions that I'd like to share with you and, uh, make a recommendation for, since you didn't have it at this meeting, I think we're going to pack it up in December, but you'll get a chance to look at that and ask some questions in December. But I'm happy to take some questions tonight. And I do have a representative from Enterprise here who can help me, uh, back up with some other questions that we have.
Um, so I sort of end up running the desk, you can, um, equipment, making sure that page direct, that it's, um, something that we own or something that we lease. Um, if you mention that, I think we've got, being able to phone to a bunch of different categories, so street department's gonna be driving around and all this stuff, right? Where you have some others, there's gonna be a finance, a beautiful, a... Where you have some others that might be a finance vehicle, a primary vehicle that's nothing compared to your normal job. So hopefully we make sure that we do any account for those sort of differences. And on our higher mileage vehicles, make sure we're not in a situation where we're getting heavily penalized in the lease because all our mileage, which is one of the guys you have to worry about places. Right, um, and then another question I have is about, uh, maintenance on vehicles. Certainly I want the company to be responsible for maintenance, but are they also paying the bill for it? And so we're just leasing a vehicle that needs some tire and brakes, they're paying for it and it's part of the lease. Or is that extra cost to us? I bring up the specifics. Then my son works for a company that has a fleet that they develop, you know, a fleet management system. He sent me a truck the other day, a box truck, to have a sunshade repairer. Well, came and picked it up, brought it back and sent him a two thousand dollar bill. He said, what's this for? I just need a sunshade repaired. They said, well, we call the management company, the company needed credits and these other things. And they approved it all without his company knowing about it and his company then suffered a bill. I don't want to find us in a situation, uh, I have run, uh, we all have to reflect far and get the, the tires broken. And every time you go in, I tell you, you need a rubber to see if you may just have something a year, right? So I don't, um, want anybody else to make an approval for the work expenses on our behalf without us having a chance to question them, know them upfront, approve them or discuss them. So the big thing I guess I would say is we, we gather some of the details of all these leases. And we're not sure we're looking for that sort of stuff upfront so that we don't have exposure to our end costs that we previously might not.
Any other questions?
I have one question. Um, I mentioned Enterprise here. I'm wondering if as you're going through this, what other cities are doing some type of fleet management? How has it worked out and, and what have their comments or what, what have you looked at their programs? And how can it work for us? And do they use Enterprise most commonly or is there someone else? Um, and what is a plan for other cities and for the county? And the other, the size or fleet, uh, vehicles or vehicles?
We have a few neighboring cities that participate in that. I don't know if any of those are in Atlanta. There's Oakwood, there's, I'm sorry, this is Cat from Enterprise. She can help me with that.
Yes. Which we have, we have over sixty-one in, um, let's call it Atlanta metro area. And I could learn a little bit then, I'm still learning, um, some of the things, but I know Delon and that is one of the people who's here and they're, you know, was it on the Fulton County Department for us this past week? I know it was a little larger and a little far away, but, um, I can provide you with those packages and support that we do that includes, um, in our previous materials that listed a lot of folks that are, um, neighboring towns or cities, um, but we do have a large presence both here in the major, uh, Atlanta area and then within the state of Georgia, over a hundred and twelve, uh, total partnerships with government agencies. Was it, have you talked to other city managers and you said, okay, did you went to a fleet program? Are you glad about this or glad that you did not go with it?
We have talked to a number of other cities. I just want to mention several, I think, and Parkville, Millville, Canton, Jungu, and two counties, and Green. This is what I knew at the time, so there are some additions.
Yep.
Cindy, Paul and I have been, uh, looking into this for a while. Cindy reached out to a few, uh, of the folks that are responsible for managing the management of it. And I think there, there is some work that we've got to do on the back end just to manage it from all of this standpoint. Uh, but I think that's largely the perspective of experience. Uh, we did ask a lot of questions about the maintenance part of the program. So we'll kind of put together that in the actual memo to make sure we cover all of those sides. There are some wear and tear kind of items that are not public managed by the program. Uh, but, um, everything else is typically covered under the twenty-five. So, um, that helps protect us when it comes to the service intervals that are required. And we'll have people like, uh, I don't think we mentioned Shane as our mechanic. He does great job. Sometimes he can do outsource, uh, service, which is true if it's a one mechanic shop or it's a large vehicle with, with this kind of. So we aren't committing with that part of the process. This just gives us access to shops that have expertise. But I'll certainly provide you a reference information.
Um, so other vehicles as a transition through this, we're just about sixty-two. Will we move all those, those vehicles or will we just?
The, so for, for twenty twenty-six, we've got a request for two vehicles, two pickup trucks. Right now I think we're going to dip our toe in the water with, with two vehicles and then start cycling through some of the older ones in late twenty-six and twenty-seven. So the hard part about this is that there are ordering windows for the Ford and for the other manufacturers. And so it's, you know, August, September, October. And so we're late into that process now, so this, um, can like push us back a little bit. But we certainly want to start aiming in the direction of getting rid of the older F-150s. Uh, I didn't mention this, but one of them still has a hand crank window. It still doesn't have a backup camera, doesn't have any of the sensor equipment. It was, uh, bottom barrel based model of the father. We'll start aiming in the direction of those vehicles first.
Thinking back and sort of on what Alvin asked is once you get, my question to you, once you get into it, how do you get out of it? If you decide, hey, this is not working and like now you're thirty, forty vehicles into it, how do you, how do you spin yourself back out? Is that, you don't have to answer now, it's just more of a, just a general.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's a decision, uh, that is made with a particular vehicle. Probably shared this before the meeting, but, you know, we choose to buy a, um, hand and axle dump truck. We don't have to do it through Enterprise because you pay cash for it, which we can benefit ourselves. And we do a lot of those things. So the real, the real transition has to be how you move from, uh, these payments. So I'm just going to throw it out there. So let's say it's a hundred thousand dollars a year because we've got fifty vehicles. Uh, then we transition to, well, we're going to buy one and it's going to come off the program. Or I think Gary's question last month was, well, you have to do forty-eight months or sixty months. It just depends on the vehicle, how much we want to work in the budget. And then you want to sell it early if it has, uh, doesn't have a hundred thousand miles, but it's got a lot of hours. Which is not accumulating a lot of miles, but get a lot of hours on it. So maybe you want to cycle out of it. And I think those are all operational decisions that we make and we're in control of. So the question of over mileage, uh, which you mentioned, I don't think it applies in this days. We need to redefine, but I don't think it applies and I can't, uh, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not even sure how long, how you've been with Enterprise.
Yeah, you really break that down and if I'm a little over ten years, come up on eleven. Um, I've studied the municipal space for the last six of those years. Uh, so the difference in this and a standard deal at least is that it's an equity lease. So really fancy for saying there's no wear and tear, there's no mileage. However, if you, if we anticipate the vehicle's going to drive twenty thousand miles a year and you drive fifty, then the amount you're paying off each month is going to be equivalent to a twenty thousand mile pattern. Meaning when you get to the end of term, um, it's going to be worth, you know, that mileage band is what we anticipated. So if you drive more than you haven't kept the payment up with that, that's what we're trying to avoid. There's no wear and tear fees, no over mileage fees. Um, you have the rights to the equity at the end of term, which is what makes it so fruitful for government agencies. You combine your ability to buy really low with our ability to sell really well. And that's what makes us sustainable, uh, fleet for them. And so when we look at them, we're looking at these assets as the best and right time to get out of them. Uh, when does it make most sense to give the most money for it? And when do we experience a loose amount of maintenance, um, challenges?
On that note, we had, one of the vehicles we've described to you was a, uh, two thousand seven. I'm going to say it was F-150 development today, et cetera. And it was, uh, a little more than a hundred and thirty thousand miles. We, we kept it a little too long and we sold it on our auction site, uh, for like thirty-seven hundred dollars. Maybe that was a good price. Um, it's a little bit like the acquisition side. I think there's, uh, maybe a better audience for the auction side, uh, through a bigger organization. So we just, we're trying to find that balance between what values left in it, selling it and also buying vehicles. I think that was an important part of it as well, start talking about what sells better on the back end. Sometimes it's not easy, um, you know, we may just want a single cab truck, uh, but on the resale back end side, maybe we want a crew cab F-150 instead. So we had some conversations about that and who was selling and who was, who was a buyer of the Ford plant. You know, things like that that affect when you get a vehicle. So maybe there's opportunities for us to make a better selection.
Outside of the municipal space, do you also do some states?
States?
Like large fleets?
Oh, yes, sir. I mean, our, here in Atlanta, uh, one of our larger fleets is all forms of ten thousand. Um, but the, the wheelhouse that we really invest, like I'll use Bolton as a great example. They're a little over a thousand people. But, um, we try to stay in that, you know, two hundred to, to a thousand, right? We are capable of servicing all fleet sizes to boil it down and look at each vehicle as a cent per mile. So every mile you drive in that vehicle costs you a certain amount, whether that's an outfit, police cruiser or, or a truck. And we try to figure out the best tool for the job and what that financial impact is.
Any other questions?
I think he's got a question. I mean, can you circle? I looked at, I mean, sixty-two vehicle standard fleet right now is the goal as we start cycling through and turning some of these into a lease to get rid of what we have or try to keep some of the ones that we paid cash for as burner vehicles, if you will. Or so essentially are we keeping a sixty-two, sixty-five vehicle fleet or are we trying to potentially expand and have some flexibility in some of our older stuff?
I think it's getting rid of the older vehicles. So, yeah, maybe, uh, mechanic, if people do come and make an older vehicle and drive it, they'll think of parts. Uh, that's fine, except for the safety component is part of it when you're down highway road. One, one, and accident on highway twenty of one, the county's, you know. So don't want to have that happen. So, uh, it is really cycling through some of the older vehicles that are, uh, don't have a safety feature. So I'll, I'll kind of leave it there to say that we don't have to get rid of all the older vehicles in stock, but it does take up space on the yard.
Well, and that's what I was trying to get at, you know, if we have sixty-two now, we double in size essentially our fleet. You know, added cost and everything like that, just make sure, are we keeping X amount or?
I don't see it grow too much further than that.
Appreciate the answer, answer all the questions as well. Um, I guess now we move on to some discussions and I thought.
Thank you, um, you should add about the, um, the marketing frame, what, um, things you can't see it, um, it's a bad design and, um, and, um, probably work, they, they continue to do, um, marketing frame. It's been, it's been pretty difficult, um, it's been very important, um, to keep our relationship as sane as well as keeping, um, employees, um, safe. Um, planning is done through, which is continuing education in, um, in basic training, the planning as well as, learning about, um, housing studies, uh, and how it can help people afford, um, in the federal match project. Whatever, um, and then public safety, um, um, Jay Smith attended the National Association Chiefs Conference, um, a couple of weeks ago, uh, with that, with that, which he's, uh, he's going to be moving internally on the teacher's own staff, so, so good. Jay Smith, want to give us sort of updating that stick in the concert? You were there with a lot of your.
Yeah, um, it covered a wide range of, of topics from mental health to policing in the, uh, twenty-first century recruitment, retention, um, just a, um, wide range of topics that were covered out there. Too many to even attend. Um, the, um, exhibition hall had, I mean, it would take you probably three days to walk through everything. They had everything from helicopters to, you know, drones, uh, command vehicles and everything, but a lot centered around smaller agencies. So was able to bring back some of that information and we've got a new training platform that we're starting up. It's through, um, COPS, um, where we can get additional training, uh, besides Georgia Post. Um, we've also partnered with, um, the Police Academy Down in Forsyth. Um, they'll be coming here the first, I think the first week of March, putting on a, um, leadership and public safety course, um, which is a highly sought after course. And they usually just teach it down there, but we're able to get on to bring it up here. So it will benefit everybody locally. Also, we just rolled out our autism initiative, um, earlier this month, uh, earlier in October. And then with the holiday season coming up, we'll be, uh, in the neighborhoods a little bit more. Try to return those packaged thieves from getting some of these neighborhoods around and more visible downtown with all the decorations and lights of, uh, the ice rink coming up.
Thank you. We, um, Adrian, as we do an update on, on events, um, last weekend was, um, Bill Young, Jr. at the, in the theater, on stage by on the stage, children's theater and, um, I understand it was, um, they got like seven hundred or similar, didn't it, a few in, um, the various performances and, and three shows. That's, um, that's a pretty good house to have, um, and, um, you know, fabulous young actors. If you have a chance, you might appreciate to do that. Um, you know, the Eagle Theater like downtown is, um, one from the Halloween of mode. It was for Halloween festival, Halloween festival field. Um, and, uh, and that, um, I would ask that you, um, consider putting on the agenda next week, um, as a report from, uh, the player field as well as the, on the stage children's theater. We've got a agreement with them, one of them is in, in court. And then also when, uh, at that time, at that time, just giving three bucks a week above what happened in the twenty-fourth and the past season, um, what the projections that were, uh, set. Do you have other presentations? Starting tomorrow, it's the Sword Walk in Downtown in the Mayor's poster. Um, for the big, uh, for the local, uh, businesses, um, that are participating and we're finishing on, uh, with the fleet truck and the automobile. So, um, something is done, um, maybe in, in four P M. tomorrow. Um, and it's starting on the seventh, and the weekend is seven, the fifteenth, sixteen. Um, the players will present about, uh, the, the shrewd, uh, parties on Saturdays, uh, at eight P M. And Saturday afternoon, and Sunday afternoon, that's free. Um, if you haven't participated in one of our, um, ceremony, uh, important things, the ceremony on the period of New Year. I was just coming in there. Um, maybe plus one street, country band, and, um, and then, um, um, and then, I think ten fifteen, I think. Then the public, the ceremony, the Trump's on the eleventh. The doctor has known this yet, but the people that's, uh, in the program. Now they're asking for chocolate. And then you're going to be, uh, play with dances, you know, not driving on the eleventh, twenty-seventh. And the performance in the, uh, forty, forty-second.
If I could add one more thing, if you don't mind, there's actually two Veterans Day ceremonies on that day. And I want to encourage people to go to those because there's going to be a really special one down at Old Brook. It's just a, I think it's a two or three, but I'll let everybody know. Uh, we have a couple of veterans there, including one from World War Two, uh, that are going to be speaking. We have a couple veterans there, including one from World War Two, that are going to be speaking. And it's just, again, just another special point to look at. I'll let it.
John Barry's Christmas tour, we will load in for rehearsal on the twentieth, his first performance, we're going to live on the road. Friday after that, he's going to, it was open at seven, Tuesday at eight. And then John Barry, in the venue, he does his hits, he does some of his Christian music, you know, global international. And then the second part of his show is from Christmas music. And there's nothing that people that sing Christmas music as well as either. And then the Grand Street Concert Band plays the top. The concert is on the twenty-ninth. The only charge to get in, it's not required, it's not mandated, but it's very, very important. You'll charge on the Capitol. And then you'll have, after that, Drew Vance's home for the holiday show at four p.m. on the third of November in the theater. And then Avery Calvi, twenty of his days of December are full, and then it is not that. And we close it down and then we start the holidays. This is the, the, a lot of things going downtown. I want to thank Andy, the quake staff, the downtown maintenance staff, the public work group, all the teams us to make a big transformation by downtown. From, we go from the Halloween celebration on the twenty-fourth to, that's right, tonight, five hundred, five hundred and five. Second weekend, November, everything will be installed. The grand string that will open on the fifteenth, fourteenth, fourteen. Another thing I'd like to put on the agenda for next week is the agreement that was reviewed by our attorney with Appalachian Mountain Services for property tax collection, local property tax collection. We will have a number of things up to be described, and the particular role, they will take it from the private estate stage all the way to half the property sales. But they do this, but how they do it in the public cities, anything like that. So our only cost to this, we can maybe a thousand dollars for something that's beyond what people nailed up. At the end of the fee structure, we want to have a property, property. So I think that concludes my report. If you have any other questions.
Two things, first of all, going back to the fleet management, this is hurting me. We here, we've funded a lot of that, that's false, which we can do if we want to. These false reviews on lease history. And the second, and the third one, that, no, we should, that, ready for appetizing, sometimes we remember, and it's beyond our agenda for a simple, per session, if it's something else. I'm going to leave this at seven. Maybe, maybe, right before. All right, anybody else? We have no need for a regular session, so I think I can mention to, I don't know. It's a motion. We've got a motion from here in for a second. Second, second, say it, all those favor return. See you next Monday, seven thirty.